All right, good evening. This is Tuesday, June 28. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 14, 2016, regular meetings.
I moved second.
Any discussion or changes on the minutes? All right, seeing none, all is in favor. It's all except Dalberg. Extensions?
Extensions.
Dalberg, okay. We have an opportunity for public comment. Seeing no public presence, we're gone. To principals' reports.
Good evening, everyone. So, a few things. We did a chancellor, if you wrapped up the year since the last time I spoke to you. As always, want to give you a Run Across America update. You did make our goal, actually, we were short of it. This year, we made it all the way to San Francisco. That was the goal for the year, that was the students'. I don't have the exact calorie count, but it was up there. My bunch of thousands somewhere. The kids were very excited. They, many of us realized we didn't quite need it last year, and they worked so hard for it. So, a few props on that. Wanted to let you know, our special Friends Day annual happened this year. That's Friday before Memorial Day. I wanted to let you know, we always do that talk contest, and I mentioned it. For the first time ever, we had a student sister run last year. This year, Gretta Lee Hane won, so we had Lee Hane's two year tomorrow. And I don't know if I've ever mentioned it, but the way we do that, we actually don't look at the names. We lay them all out, and we choose them, and then after we chose them, we're like, you know, there's a style here, and we realize that. But I wanted to tell her, congratulations, one last time.
There's no mic there. I didn't even realize there wasn't a mic there.
Speak louder.
Fill the table.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Shall we start over? No, go ahead.
Save us a couple minutes.
Respectively, we had our K-2, 3, 5 field days. We did not use any team or rain days. Put pictures of that as well. Hopefully, I noticed they're kind of posted all over the place. We've been asking families the last couple of weeks to send pictures to Kevin. You're now compiling a little video of something we can actually add for our grand in the next year. Because that usually doesn't happen until after the grand survey or anything in the next year. I wanted to thank Sue Van Black and the seventh grade students who came over a couple weeks back, sharing foreign language children's books to our first grade students. They came and visited, not only read them, but they organized games in French and Spanish after the event, all before like 11 o'clock, which was pretty impressive. It was great to have. It was like students from different buildings were able to work together. I wanted to let you know, just as a FYI, a lot of times we let you know about testing. We played a grade three math field test. We were chosen, we did that on June 8th, and sent that up to the state. A couple of things I wanted to mention that I thought was coming up last time. On Sunday, June 12th, a decent group of my staff joined me in the systemic fibrosis walk in Wappingers. We joined grades of the gate. Like I mentioned, a handful of staff came, we did a walk, which was one of those kind of always looking for opportunities to kind of get together outside of school support. Kids from our community, so that was one great way we were able to do that. I want to thank all the staff that joined me there. Also, I wanted to thank the third grade, and all my specialist teachers, including Mr. Wolfen from STEM. On June 17th, we did grade three's Operation Cooperation. It was a full day event. It was something that took place of the rail trail, and it allowed us to kind of incorporate every student in the third grade getting involved. It was a full day event. It was an amazing, amazing group of activities. Lot of high interest teamwork and collaboration activities around art, music. For example, the Trump Circle's African drumming. STEM, we did some rocket propulsion activities, library visit. Mr. Yellen said it's a castle building behind a gate. All the students, a lot of different materials, the same materials they had built a castle covered, and the students have to try to figure out what they have built. So, a lot of, a lot of just, a lot of good noise, a lot of yelling, a lot of having fun. All the students outside, and once again, I also wanted to thank all the large parents who volunteered. It was a great turnout. Had pretty much 100% attendance. And once again, a lot of work and time into organizing that day. I wanted to give everyone a heads up. Our summer reading list from the CLS library is up on Mrs. Kennedy's website. It consists of some of the best book releases over the last year or two, including the Newberry and Cali Copliners. So, if these students have an opportunity, go in there and take a look at some of the books she recommends for summer reading. And wrapping up, just wanted to, in addition to our kindergarten graduation, which went very well, we also had our grade five moving up ceremony on June 22nd in the auditorium. Once again, I want to thank my colleagues for letting us use that for, I think, the fourth year in a row. It's always a great event, and that video shows me every year. But we're up to about an hour and a half, but it's really, a really good event, and it's some recent additions, including specialist teachers' awards the last two years. This year, we had a song conducted, a song by the students to their parents, conducted by Jack Bedigal, which I just wanted to commend him. He did a great job, a very artistic young man, a part of that group coming into the sixth grade. So, in addition to the song, he actually conducted with his team here, so. And of course, like I mentioned, the video of celebrating those students this year as a chancellor is always a great way to end a year. So, having a chancellor last month was great.
Questions for Mr. King?
Could you just, so Operation Cooperation, was that here?
I was on, yeah, it was on campus. It was outside a chancellor.
And was it developed internally, or is it some like external thing?
No, it developed internally. We were just looking for something, and it's kind of the end of the year celebration for third grade students, that everyone could participate in. That was, not that it really represented what we're doing at Chancellor on a regular basis, which is why the specialist teachers weren't involved. So, yeah, it was on campus, planned over the course of months, you know, leading up to it.
Great.
It took the place of the rail trail bike trip that had been done for a number of years.
Oh, I see. I see, okay.
In order to engage all the kids.
Yeah, we noticed over the years past, we get more and more students who just could participate for a variety of reasons.
Oh, sure.
And this was kind of a way of incorporating just a lot of their, you know, what they'd kind of do all year, but incorporating it into a lot of activities that can kind of help them celebrate the end of the year.
I see that everyone can do, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Good evening. So, I just wanted to share a couple of projects and things that went on to finish out our school year at Volkley. As Brett said, in conjunction, collaborative project between our computer science teacher and our foreign language teachers, our seventh grade French and Spanish students created children's books and went and shared those with the CLS students. That's a project that they, they came back, they loved so much. The feedback from the first grade teachers was, was so good that there are already a number of other plans in the works for next year, including food taste testing, Larry Anthony's involved. We intended to, to try and Skype with a school over in Spain this year. We had a couple of technical difficulties that we think in the future will have an opportunity to work out, but we're very excited to include that in this project next year as well. In our social studies classes, our seventh grade students ended the year by taking part in an extensive Civil War and Reconstruction research project. You'll recall that a couple of years ago, last year was the first, but that replaced the seventh grade expo project. That was a longstanding tradition here in Rhinebeck. However, the, the product was outstanding last year, and even more outstanding this year, using i-moving garage vans, the Macs, the iPads, the high school green room for several groups. Students created 10-minute videos depicting various aspects of the Civil War. This was the second year that they, that they did this. The projects continue to evolve. They were very impressive this year, again, as we've done in the past. We're trying to get more parents into the middle school, so for events such as this, we've been inviting parents in. I think we had the greatest turnout of parents that showed up to watch their children's, their child's and other children's videos during their child's social studies period, so we're excited to continue that next year. Again, feedback was overwhelmingly positive. Earlier this month, BMS finished out our spring concert season with the choral concert. Again, Mrs. Woliky, and in this case, a woman by the name of Miss Kleina, who took over for Laura Natalie, who had hoped to be able to, to last and make it to the sprint choral concert, but alas, had her daughter three days before the concert. So, we had a woman who stepped in prepared, but really wasn't ready to, to, you know, perform on three days' notice, learned all of the students, learned all of the music in three days, and really put together a fantastic performance. And again, as we've done in years past, it culminated with all of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade choral students on the stage at one time, and always a lot of fun, a lot of audience participation, and a great show. That was followed up on June, I believe it was 5th, by our BMS instrumental small ensemble concert. Science classes, our eighth grade students ended the year, as they have for the past several years, with an extensive research project during which they developed from hypothesis, right to testing, right to conclusion, and presentation, a science experiment. They were able to pick the experiment, analyze the results, and present their findings. We had all sorts of, we always get interesting, interesting project ideas. One group tested the observation skills between males and females. That created a lot of, a lot of interesting conversation. The effect of testing on heart rate, the effect of carbonation on propulsion water bottle rockets, and the color of food and taste tests. So, it really runs the gamut. On Monday, June 13th, through coordination with, of Corinne Calafala and our computer science teachers, we welcomed several engineers into our BMS computer classes. We thought we were only going to be able to procure enough volunteers to do this for one day, but we actually got enough volunteers to do it for two days, which was fantastic. Thanks to Corinne, Chris Lee, Johnny Mahn, Roger Quans, Scotty Jenkins, and Serena O'Connor. They did a fantastic job. They ran some very interesting activities and, you know, experiments with the students. We're very excited that this program, we're looking to serve as a pilot and hoping that it's going to be a precursor to expanding our hour of code activities next year and creating a little bit lengthier, more extensive engineering week in both schools. On June 7th, June 16th, we held a moving up ceremony in our ice cream social. Again, as Brett spoke about, his fifth grade moving up day, which I was able to attend. What a fantastic, fantastic program that was. Our eighth grade moving up ceremony, again, was extremely well attended. Feedback was very positive this year. With our student achievement awards, we always honor students, recognize students that maintain a, well, basically maintain an A average or higher throughout their entire three-year, sorry, throughout their entire three-year tenure at Volkley Middle School. We honored 16 students with those awards this year, and then, and this is...
Sir, see you out.
Oh, I thought it was locked. Very, very, a member of the public.
These got away.
Very, very recently, we decided to diversify between high honor roll and honor roll, and this year, we honored six students that maintained an A average or above, basically received an A or above in every course they ever took in Volkley Middle School, grade six to eight. And in years past, the most that we've had are two students, so we were very pleased by that. On June 17th, we held our field day. Thanks to the PTSO, we had a number of activities at the end of the school year. I put the word out to parents, PTSO members, and again, as I've said, we're trying to get more parents involved in the middle school, and we got such a wonderful group of parents that came out for that event, many more than we expected. I think we had hoped to get six, seven parents, and we probably, throughout the day, we probably had a good 20, 25 parents, you know, in and out throughout the day. Thanks to Tom and Ed and Brett for taking their turn to the dump tank. Always, always exciting, always a fun way, a fun way to end the school year, a fun way to end Field Day in a nice way for the staff and students, even if they're some of the children. And then, we started all over again last week with our fifth grade parent orientation. Once again, in an effort to get our students involved, we had a number of students that served as tour guides. We also had a number of students that came and, and wrote short, short essays depicting the day in the life of the sixth grade students. Again, our feedback was, was very positive for our parents to do the things that we did to end the school year.
Questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, from a high school angle, in terms of graduating school, there are a couple of academic updates. On May 27th, our choral students traveled to an adjudication festival in Boston, Connecticut, men's choir, women's choir, and the folk choir, and each group received a superior rating, which is the highest rating that is given at this particular festival. And the adjudicators are all music educators, so it's quite an accomplishment. Our Regents exam passing rates were all excellent. I'll certainly defer to my colleague, our colleague, Mr. Kreps, but I would like to point out that on the new Common Core English Language Arts Regents Exam, which we administered for the first time this year, we had 99% pass rate. And on the Alford Two Common Core Exam, all the students who took that exam passed. Again, I'll defer to Mr. Kreps to break down the proficiency level of the faculty, very impressed with the hard work for students, and it's a very successful administration. In the co-curricular realm, one update in terms of a new club, the Technology Club, this year donated a total of 23 devices to BMS and Rhinebeck High School students in need, and also to some students in Madagascar via our colleague, Henry Frischknecht. They also had prepared an additional 13 devices that are ready to be donated when we start school next year to the students who are in need. I wanted to update you as well on some data and of your activities. As you know, we had our academic awards program on June 6th. Seventy-six awards were distributed to 90 students. In between academic awards and athletic awards, for the first time, we had a senior concert and arts show. By my count, I had about 100 members in the audience. Mrs. Woliky is one experienced in these things, and she estimates about 150. But I'll say, it was a very nice turnout. The work of the student artists in the lobby in our graphic arts classes were phenomenal. It was a student-run concert in the auditorium. They did a wonderful job, and we're hoping that definitely will continue this tradition in future years. Our athletic awards night the following evening, 11 scholar-athlete teams were recognized. There were nine individual awards, and I note that 42 seniors, which was almost half of our class, participated in at least one varsity sport during the senior year, which shows a lot about the dedication of our students and the strength of our students the last thing that happens. Our seniors, they went on a senior class trip on June 15th to, when I was a kid, we called it storytelling. I don't think it's called storytelling anymore. Dating myself in Six Flags.
Ready to skate.
About 80 of our, 80 of our seniors attended. They had a wonderful time, thanks to the chaperones who were accompanying them, and got back right on, right on the dot when Mrs. Bear said they would be back, so that made them, this is the principal, principal very happy. At commencement on Saturday, in the, in the heat of a battle, I neglected to convey some thanks, so I'll ask the board's indulgence to do so now. I want to certainly recognize the facilities and operations department, the grounds of the matlet. Mrs. Bathory, Mrs. Vanathorn, our guidance department, made sure that all the names were correct, the diplomas were in the correct order. You'll see in a couple of minutes, they made sure each kid got the right, each student got the right sort of diploma. I want to recognize and thank Mrs. Jane Christie, who created that wonderful banner that hangs behind our graduates. Wonderland Forest donated floral arrangements, and thanks to Marla Aldrich for stepping in to conduct our students through the cultural reception hall. At commencement, 27 awards were given to 40 students, and those awards were approximately about $50,000 in financial, financial awards and scholarships, which says a lot again about the support of our community for our students. 96 diplomas were awarded. You will, of course, remember that when we moved away from an automatic numerical ranking of students, part of that initiative was to develop, for lack of a better term, a Latin honors recognition program for graduates, based on a college model. And we divided those, of course, in summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and cum laude. We had 10 students who graduated summa cum laude, nine students graduated magna cum laude, and 23 graduated cum laude. Just to give you a little bit more background, so you can be prepared with, the grade cutoffs for these designations are based on our honor roll cutoffs. So, it's based on a weighted average. Cum laude is 93 to 99, magna 100 to 2.99, and summa is 103 to 12. So, it's consistent with how students are recognized every quarter for that academic award. It's a way to centralize and formalize their hard work over the course of their high school careers. I would like to take a minute, because nothing, nothing works as well as seeing something real. So, passing around an advanced Regents diploma, which indicates mastery in mathematics and science, and at the very bottom, you'll see that there's a sticker indicating that that particular student is an example, but that student is a summa cum laude student. So, there's a physical manifestation of how we recognize our students. And just as it's making its way around, an advanced Regents diploma means that students have passed eight Regents exams. Advanced designation with honors means they have a 90 average on the eight Regents exams. There's a little corset I'll have to get to in a minute. Mastering math, mastering science means that they have at least an 85 on three science exams, Regents, and three mathematics exams. This gets much more complicated now that there are different pathways to graduation, so there are 80 exams, there are 87 exams at the pathway. And lastly, the summa cum laude designation, the Latin honors, is on the bottom underneath the steel for the Regents endorsement. I'll also recognize our talented artists, our teachers, who helped us decide where to put all those stickers. And that is part of the hard work that Mrs. Vanathorn's, Bathory, and our guidance department go through a day or so before graduation to make sure all of the correct designations are on the diploma, so that when the student receives the diploma, it's, it's letter perfect and ready to go. Lastly, in catching up on some reading, a few days ago, the state has now authorized an additional designation for diplomas called the bilingualism seal. As I've gone through some of the information, bilingualism recognizes most students who study a language other than their native language during the time in high school and pass what's now being called a checkpoint A exam. So, I'm talking with my guidance counselors, with our language teachers, as well as with Mr. Kreps. We're going to investigate the process for being authorized by SED to put the seal on the diploma, and I would expect certainly before next year's commencement, we'll have a proposal or an update to the board in terms of how we'll proceed. So, that's a lot about commencement. I thank you for indulging me. And I wanted, again, to emphasize the fact that in moving away from numerical rank, we're certainly making it clear to students that academic achievement is something that's not restricted to a few people, that it's not a zero-sum game, that any member of our student community is able to achieve academic excellence. And those numbers, 42 students, are recognized the Latin honors of their diplomas. I think that says a lot about the role of our students. As we look forward to the summer, once again, with Mr. Berg's help and with the physical education TV's help, we've surveyed our graduating seniors. We've also surveyed our ninth grade students in the building of the planning team, as well as the market shares will use some of that survey data as planned objectives for the upcoming school year. And finally, looking again to the beginning of the school year, as we've done for the past four years, with faculty help, peer mentor candidates have been identified, they have applied, and they started their training during exam week when they were taking exams with Ms. Roneye. They work on team building, they work on communication skills, listening skills. They learn how to be a valuable mentor for students who are new to the district. And as we continue this program, the peer mentors are playing more of a role in helping to abduct our ninth graders into lives where making sure that they feel comfortable and helping them find their way to workforce opportunities. So, that's...
Skater?
Yeah, I just want to thank you and your whole staff, because graduation was fantastic as always. It really, to me, is just like such a beautiful occasion to celebrate kind of all that goes on in our schools, K to 12, and the kids there, and it just so represents our community the way our community gives, the talent of the kids, the enthusiasm of the kids, the relationship between the kids and the speaker from the school, the faculty. And, you know, your office does a tremendous job in just making it happen seamlessly, so thank you so much.
Thank you, it's a pleasure. It's not fair, I get to stand up there and enjoy all of it, and everybody else is all working to give me this.
Yeah. I do have a question, though, about this mastery in English and the mastery in math stickers, right?
Mastery in mathematics and science.
And mathematics and science. So, that's been, that's like, the state authorizes us to do that, like, and, but we have to do the whole stickering, or do they? So, this is like an option, they say, if you want to do this, you can do this, or how is that?
Students who, again, meet the criteria, will say mastery in mathematics, that's automatic. If they have an 85 for a call on three of the mathematics exams, mathematics Regents exams, they are, they are that, mastery in mathematics. In terms of generating the diploma, this diploma, the school district orders should be Jostens as well as Stewarts, and that's, that's on the box. The state will, we never exercised, the state will send us free diplomas, you know, Xerox.
Oh, I see, okay. But that thing, that like any school district in New York State could do this mastery of mathematics thing?
Correct. As long as the students get the...
Right, right, right. Okay, great, thank you. Can I just say one more? I just want to say, like, thanks for a terrific ear, you know, like, as you hear, like, you guys, it's always a treat to listen to all the things that go on, so thanks for your hard work.
Dr. Davenport's gonna have to stay after class. Thank you, gentlemen.
When you have to stay after school, it's really serious.
Move on to board committee reports. We have the finance committee.
That's me, and the minutes are at your place. So, we talked about the cafeteria financials. In the big picture, the, the lunch, growth of our deficit in the lunch program has slowed significantly. The deficit at the end of this school year is 11,600, maybe a few dollars more than that, and that was within $40 of last year's, which is pretty crazy. But an interesting thing about that is that the costs this year were higher with the use of compostable trays and the new milk contract. So, you know, kudos to Tom and to Larry Anthony for getting that program more under control financially. You can see that participation for the lunch program, however, is around 24% each of the last three years, but breakfast participation has increased dramatically. We have not used fund bounds to offset losses in the past three years, but as you know from our last report from this committee, or from the audit committee, the, it was called out in an audit to that we do need to make the program whole each year. On your agenda is the recommendation from Tom to transfer, transfer 45,000... On your agenda is the recommendation from Tom to transfer, transfer forty-five thousand dollars from the general fund to the school lunch fund, which this committee approved of or supports. As you can see from the notes, Tom doesn't feel that this is going to have an adverse effect on our fund balance. We did discuss Larry Anthony's recommendation that there be an increase in the lunch, cost of a lunch. And, you know, we can have some discussion about that now, but as you can see from the numbers in the notes, I know he is concerned about anticipated cost increases for food. But in our discussion, we're concerned about increasing it, at least to the extent that was recommended, which is twenty-five cents for BMS RHS and ten cents for the Chancellor breakfast. Right now, Rhinebeck and Hyde Park charge the most for lunch among Dutchess County schools, and, you know, perhaps other school districts might be changing theirs for next year, but if we are increased to this extent, we would continue to be above the thoughts of other schools. We talked about that maybe after two years, this coming year should really focus on increasing participation, something that maybe Larry hasn't had the opportunity to really focus on. Deirdre suggested revisiting the idea of selling snacks after school as a way to bring in revenue and to sort of meet students' needs, all the student, many, many students who stay after school for sports and clubs. It'd be interesting to see how later start time might impact the breakfast program. Would it grow more with students being dropped off earlier, perhaps? Perhaps it wouldn't if students are at home longer in the morning. We talked about needing to communicate more about the program to boost participation. There is a food services page on the website that perhaps it needs a more robust presence. But Larry is considering various ideas, such as raffles. Apparently, they do this in Red Hook, where you get something donated from a local business, and you try to get kids to participate in lunch program because that day there's going to be a raffle for something or at the end of the week. And, you know, so at this moment, the committee wants to look more at perhaps other possibilities for finding a middle ground, Joe suggested, for a price increase. But we want to give it more time. Also, on our agenda tonight is a resolution so that we can enter into an agreement with the cooperative purchasing network program that will enable us to piggyback on other municipal contracts to get a better price on various supplies. We discussed budget transfers for the end of the year. Most of those transfers, again, in your packet, are to correct budget code placements or reallocate monies. But I think it is notable, the increase in special education residential program costs. Some of that is residual from other years, Duchess County billing us for previous years. They had held on to bills, they hadn't really done their paperwork, so I think it's like eighty thousand or eighty-plus thousand dollars in that line item, and some of that is from the county delaying billing us for a portion of what's called a maintenance for kids who are in residential programs. And we did actually, the computer leasing, we did actually discuss, it's also on our agenda, which is to approve of three laptop carts for the high school. Any questions?
Lisa?
On the Duchess County billing us now for old services, would it be fair to assume that in the years in which those services were actually rendered, that the money had been budgeted? So the money, money's there for that, it's just?
Yeah, monies were budgeted for it. What we did to get this year was we got billing from last year, and we did not carry enough money forward to cover all the costs. We had a lot of it encumbered to pull over, but not all of it. But we're, you know, it can be handled. Money's our budget, and it's just, they're just very slow on their billing. And sometimes what happens is we think everybody's paid off, and we close out the purchase order, it's done and over with, then we go into next year, and then we get a bill, and it's for two months in the middle of last year. And we go back and we check them. Yeah, that's right, we never did pay this, but you never did give us a bill. Very strange with them. We, we actually, the business officials have been very concerned about this and actually want to approach Duchess County to say, we'd like to go into your office and try to get this down so that we get billing, you know, where it's at least in the same year, or only a month or two after the end of the year. But, you know, we got one charge this year, it was from 2014. It's a legitimate charge, there's no doubt about it. And sometimes what happens is the following. Another school district paid for it initially, or they billed them initially, and I know the school and I know the kid, and I know that's exactly what happened, is they billed another school district, and then the school district finally realized, wait a second, that wasn't my kid at that time. So they asked Duchess County to make the correction, and all of a sudden it shows up on my bill, even though it might go back two years, but we always go back, and it's a long process just to make sure that we have not paid them for those services before. But then we amend the stat, too, to make sure that we get our monies back from through state aid.
And does that go in the years-long queue for reimburse?
No, it's actually, they're actually pretty good with the excess cost. It's come back. It's not something that goes into, I forget what they call it, when they, when it goes into prior year's adjustments. This, no, they're very good with that one. Anything within three years, they immediately pay up on that year. If it goes back further than that, then they start questioning and all that. But we've never had to go back that far before.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, you hit your hand up?
That was one of my questions. Thank you for explaining all that. My other question is about the transfer of forty-five thousand from the general fund, even though the deficit is about forty. Anyways, we're.
We haven't closed out. Now, those figures that Deirdre mentioned are as of June, or as of May. So June hasn't closed yet. So it also gives us a little cushion to next year. I'd hate to be done, and, you know, if I put forty, and at the end we came over forty thousand five hundred, and we're five hundred dollars in the hole, why don't we get written up for five hundred dollars? Add a little bit more, I know we're not going to surpass it, it's less I'll need the following year. So if we have the same amount next year, maybe come and say, five thousand dollars.
So it's a credit for it's next year?
Yeah, whatever's left over is a credit, put it into the fund balance and a positive side.
It should also be noted that that forty-five thousand dollar, give or take, deficit is three years. So the deficit from the past two years is only around ten or eleven thousand. From the previous year, in that one previous year, it was twenty thousand plus. So now that we've got to stay whole each year, we've got to make up for that. But fortunately, given the last two years being much better, it's, it's a lot, you remember some years, we were transferring seventy thousand dollars for, for three years, so we're really chipping away at it. And if we can stay on pace, if not get a little better, then we'll be looking to do a ten thousand, give or take, transfer each year. We won't be saving it up over three years, and the numbers will be lower anyway, so I mean, knock on wood, we're hoping that.
We want to get to the black.
Yeah.
Increase participation is the big, that's going to be our, that's our thing for this year, get more people to use the program.
The other thing I wanted to mention, just going back to Deirdre's report on the, the lunch price question, we're, Tom would be a better judge of the timeline exactly, but and we can't wait until school opens in September to make that decision. So we're, I'm not sure whether it's, it will be feasible for the newly constituted finance committee to meet, you know, in the month of July, for example. And if not, I'm guessing that one way or the other, we will probably, you know, we'll talk to Larry about some of the ideas that came up at the finance committee, but we'll probably be coming back to you maybe at the second meeting in July and say, okay, we've discussed all the possibilities, we're going to make a recommendation. Obviously, the board can approve it or not prove it, but we, you know, we have to do something within the next month or so, so we're geared up for the opening of school, so you're aware.
Can I just follow up on that? So Larry wanted to increase the breakfast price at Chancellor. Why not at the middle school, high schools, its participation is so robust, so much more robust there now, rather than such a big hit in lunch?
Well, the lunch, or the breakfast prices in the high school and the middle school are already higher than CLS, all right? So they're at one seventy-five in this building and one fifty over there. So it's just a, yeah, and the thing is, and that's one of the reasons why even in the the lunch prices, we're only at the high school. And the biggest thing is, is the portions are different. I mean, there's a smaller portion at the high school, I mean, at the elementary school for breakfast and lunch than there is in this building. So we wanted to put some recognition of that in there, that they're not getting as much food, not supposed to either, so, so that's, that's the reason.
So we'll be back to you with, with something within the next month, I think.
Other questions? All right. Move on to board goals.
I think this is kind of the, you know, the annual, say goodbye to the previous year and get ready for the coming year. And we have traditionally just brought to your attention again what the goals were for the past year and start thinking about, not necessarily specific goals for the coming year, although, you know, that certainly would be okay, but more so the process for developing goals for the coming year. For example, we haven't set a date for a board goal development workshop. So if that's in the cards for us, then we need to start thinking seriously about a date before it's the end of August and summer's gone, so.
Do you have a suggestion on the date?
It's always a challenge.
Yes. That's why we're asking you.
Well, yeah, I wish I had, you know, an idea for a date. We could, yeah, I think that the challenge is getting a date when everybody can, can be there, and it's kind of, I don't, I don't know about you, but my personal preference is not to have a goal-setting meeting unless everybody is there, because it should be everybody's, everybody's goal. And what I can do is, if the board is interested in that kind of a venue for that activity, and if you give me an idea whether the interest is, you know, a number of years, we've, we've done like a morning session, which may not work for everybody, but I can certainly, or you can do something, you know, late afternoon into the evening, if people are more comfortable with that. If you're away on vacation, it doesn't matter whether we're doing it in the morning or the evening, you're not going to be there. So what I, what I can and will do is I'll go back to the, the polling I did of you a few months ago to decide on the summer meetings and see if there are any days of the, the week in, you know, maybe in July or early August where everybody's free, at least at this point, and I'll float them out, and you can get back to me and say, yeah, that still works for me, or no, forget it, I'm going to, I have something on the fire for that particular day, and we'll try our best to get a day when everybody is able to, to be there. I have Steve Jenkins' dates from that previous meeting-setting poll, so, you know, I'll obviously include his presence in that process.
So is there any further discussion on goals?
Mark?
Yes.
In, in the past, my recollection is that people have circulated, suggested goals. So is that something that we should plan to do for this year as well?
All right, well, I'd suggest that we try to, you know, discuss a date for a goal-setting, and then we can circulate a kind of a, you know, trying to troll for thoughts about what you think our goals might be for the year, and then we can discuss those at the workshop. Hope that works for everybody.
Yeah.
All right, three, three ideas that have come up in our discussions over the last several months are, first of all, we've been having some serious discussions about a possible capital project referendum that's a significant goal, whether it appears on the list of the board's goals or not, it's going to be on somebody's list of goals. Don't look at me. We also, we also talked in the communications committee about bring some kind of community task force or whatever we're going to call it. Roundtable. Thank you for reminding me to, to, to generate some interest in the community about speaking with us and, and planning with us for the future of our school district over, over the long haul. So that may be another, I would anticipate that'll be a, you know, a protracted process. I was thinking of one other, and it slips in my mind right now, but I'm sure, it'll come back to me in the middle of the night. So I think there's, there's already, there already, I think, were the ideas out there, and I'm sure there are others that, that will percolate up through a process of putting ideas out there and seeing what, what resonates with, with the full board, so.
All right. Yes.
Well, I just wanted to take a moment to say that I think that we largely, you know, that the, the goals we've had for the past year, because that's something we often do right, is sort of look at what we have done, and, you know, one's around comprehensive district educational planning, one is about program support under the tax levy cap, and one is related to advocacy. And I do think that substantially we did address these goals, where they maybe didn't come to completion or fruition entirely. I think the CDEP process is moving along really well, as Laura reports to us. I think with a really challenging year, creating a budget with the lowest tax levy we ever had, you know, at the beginning of that process, it looked like we might be cutting all kinds of programs for our kids, and that hasn't happened, so I think that's tremendous. And despite all the problems at the state level, and there are many, I'm impressed with the level of advocacy, both as a board and Joe, I think there were several times she took on, you know, communicating with our legislators without board direction to just continue to communicate what our needs are and our perspective around a host of issues, the tax cap, you know, state funding more generally, and the impact of state assessments, and so, you know, I, I think in tough times, I think it's also really, I would just say, having like a decade-long view of this, that it says, it suggests that we created a set of goals that we thought we could handle, right? I mean, we've had year, you know, it can be hard to come up with goals, right? What are we doing? And there's so many, or we've had too many. So I think the process has really gotten better because we actually have goals that are meaningful to us and that guided us, and, and our administrators as well, and so, you know, without saying, there's always a lot more to do, but I think the goals were, helped shape the direction, and there, there are accomplishments we can celebrate here.
Deirdre?
I just want to second that, and also to say that when we think about goals for a year ahead of us, it's sort of like the North Star, you know, that we're sort of, we're charting our course, going toward those goals. Some, some goals are obviously multi-year goals, goals that, I mean, you know, program support under the tax levy cap, that I anticipate that's a goal that we won't abandon, you know, at the end of this year. And meanwhile, the work of the district, this board, and everybody in the district, and, and our administrators, often is to respond to things that are kind of less up there, you know, and more coming at us in ways that we can't necessarily anticipate. And so I'm really quite pleased with the degree to which we have been able to remain cognizant of these higher goals that we share as we respond or react to things that are developing that we can't anticipate. So I think we've gotten a balance there between big ideas that are important to us and guide us in our work together, and more workaday concerns.
Lisa?
I also think that one thing that we did, and I agree with the. been largely able to see through these goals, is that we made these goals intentionally more concrete than goals the board goals had been in years past. And I think that that made it, I won't say easier, because it wasn't an easy year, but it made it more clear how we were working towards those goals and whether we had met the elements of them. And I think that that's something for the board to continue to strive towards.
All right, anyone else?
I would just make the point, if I could, because I neglected to make the point under the finance committee report, but because at least two of these three goals were finance-oriented, it was in the finance committee minutes. But I just want to acknowledge that after a tough year, the year before as well, especially in terms of our fund balance, that Tom is now projecting that our fund balance, we're going to be in a better place regarding our fund balance. And that doesn't just happen by accident either. That's good management and, you know, prudent budgeting on the, you know, on the back end of the operation. I'll give Tom and his, and his staff a lot of credit for that. That wasn't too many months ago, we were being smacked around a little bit by the comptroller for being in serious fiscal distress. And I'm not sure exactly where we're at on his fiscal barometer. We'll find out. But when I hear Tom talk about our fund balance being projected to be up some $300,000 to $400,000 without having to cut significantly into, or if at all, into programs for kids, I think that's an accomplishment. It's kind of an under-the-radar accomplishment, but I think it's not insignificant. We ought to, we ought to celebrate that.
Move on to annual review of board operational procedures. So as you may recall, we, in the policy committee, we uncovered this policy last year that said we're supposed to review our operational procedures at least once annually. So here we are.
Well, I'll bring up one issue that, you know, maybe it's not the most critical issue in the world, but as some of you are aware, we have had some issues in getting board packets out to you on Fridays, okay? And I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus or make any, identify anybody, but there have been several times, not a lot, but more than I like to see, where we're not getting you that information when our board policy says you're supposed to get that information, which is on Friday. So that's kind of a mini-goal for me under this, under the heading of board operational procedures, that we want to make sure we're much more consistent in getting you that information when we say we're going to get it to you. Because we all know that the key to having a well-functioning board of education meeting on a Tuesday is all of you having the opportunity, even if you wait until Tuesday afternoon to look at the board packet, that's not the point. Everybody's got different schedules and that everybody have at least several days to look at the packet, ask questions before the board meeting, if in fact it raises questions in your mind. I think that part of our operation is, functions well, that we field questions, we try to get answers back to you as quickly as we're able to so the seven of you can walk into a board meeting at least knowing the lay of the land. So operationally, that's something I think we want to do even a better job on this coming year. So I just want to acknowledge that we've had some issues with that this year.
Lisa?
So going to that issue, are there alternatives that you can think of to address that, to improve that delivery system? Or perhaps should we be talking about changing the manner in which the board members get their packets?
Well, I mean, that's a good, that's a good point. We have had conversations on and off for a number of years about doing something digitally. And for this board, that doesn't seem to be something that up to this point, the consensus of the board has really embraced that. So that's always a possibility at some point down the line. I think from my perspective, if we're going to continue to use, you know, a hard copy board packets, I think it's more of a personnel management issue on our end to make sure that the proper person is making deliveries to you at the proper time. That's, I think that's really where we're at right now.
Let me throw out a suggestion. Feel free to take it. I mean, this is a small community and even people aren't far this reaches out. Aren't that far away from the district office. So, you know, a possible low-tech solution to this might be to set up some sort of a lockbox on the door of the district office and put the packets in the box. And then board members would have a key to the box and could come and take their packet. You know, it certainly cuts down on the amount of personnel that you need. You don't need a messenger to do that. And for those of us who sometimes don't get to it until Tuesday, well, it depends on us to get our packets in time to review them and be ready to deal with the subject matter topic.
Certainly investigate that as an option.
I was going to say, that's an option. And if there happened to be any packets left on Monday morning there, then we'll have the courier deliver it to your house as another, if somebody can't. I mean, I don't like the idea of you guys coming into it. I mean, you already do this free of charge as far as being members, to add an extra burden on you to come from your houses in. I mean, most of the time, a lot of times you will be coming, a lot of times you come into town over the weekend anyways, but for some people, that doesn't always happen. I mean, so I'm a little concerned about that too, to put you guys out even more. I mean, that's my concern too. I mean, it is, but it is your choices though. And we will do whatever you need to do. I mean, sometimes like this weekend, it was just a matter of, I know Mary Ann sent a text out to the guy who's courier. I went to find him physically to make sure he knew about it. And he was able to do it on time, but it does worry me.
Deirdre?
I don't know if there are any security, I mean, you know, I don't know what kind of boxes would be and there might be sensitive information. I don't know how real a concern that might be, but, and I know this won't make me popular with my colleagues, but I would have absolutely no problem with coming in by the end of Business Day to the office and picking up on a Friday. It's just however you train us, we'll do it, I think. And again, I know this isn't popular, but for goodness sake, one of the couriers literally almost slid off my driveway in the ice and snow like into, I mean, I really feel that the people who bring us those packets sometimes have to deal with terrible weather and, you know, I mean, I'm very grateful. And I personally, and again, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I don't think it would be an undue burden if we knew there was a time at which we could just make it a regular habit to come and pick it up. So like I said, I recognize I have a minority here, but it's something to consider. We come here to have meetings. We could probably come here and pick things up.
Okay. Anything else? I have one thing also. And I know I've been guilty of it. I'm sure we've all been guilty of it from time to time, but when we have, you know, like board committee minutes, if we could try to get those in, you know, on timely manner so that they can make it into the packet rather than getting emailed sometime between the time the packet comes out and Tuesday's meeting so that we can do that.
Can I add to that?
Yep.
So if this is an operational thing, yeah, I mean, I really try to save time on Tuesdays because I know that discussions often kind of percolate and questions come up and I know I need to look at that on Tuesday afternoon before I come to the meeting. But sometimes it's a little tough, you know, just given what people's schedules are. If we get into something very kind of important in terms of some new information, if it's kind of happening at really close to the meeting time, and I don't know. That's something that we can all just sort of address in terms of how we, how and when we try to respond. I know we all have variable schedules, but that, even maybe if we could try to respond to each other or raise questions by a certain time.
Or maybe we also need to just like make space in the culture of our meetings to say, I didn't read the minute. You know, it's really okay also.
To ask.
Say like, it's too late. I mean, sometimes, you know, if there are meetings on a, a committee meeting on a Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, it's tough.
I think it's not reasonable to think that people necessarily will have minutes. Now, sometimes there's an agenda item related and that's that. But I just think we should also make sure that people feel comfortable saying like, or I need time to read these minutes tonight at this moment.
Yeah.
Or I have lots of questions. And that's fine in public session too.
Yeah.
Because being able to say, I'm not totally prepared because it happened in the past day is, should be okay also. Because it is, it's hard, right? I mean, we all know that for all the various reasons.
All right, anyone else? Okay.